Okay. Very good. So noting the time is 11:30. I'll call this special meeting to order. Welcome fellow commissioners and of course, members of the public who are joining us for this special meeting of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission to discuss proposed revisions to, and I quote, "public outreach and engagement services," end quote, request for a proposal. We'll begin again with a warm welcome to our new clerk, David Hall, and ask him to provide some information about today's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting may do so under Agenda Item Number Three. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Filipino, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. Chair Bame?
Thank you very much. The next item is the roll call. David, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I would like to note for the record that all commissioners are participating via teleconference, and as such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to please unmute your microphone and say here or present as I call your name. Chair Bame?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Dostal?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ?
Here.
Commissioner Servin? Thank you, Chair Bame.
Thank you, David. So again, thanks to the commissioners for attending for the special meeting outside our usual timeline. It is appreciated. The only item on today's agenda is to discuss the proposed revisions to the Public Outreach and Engagement Services Request for Proposal, or RFP. I now like to turn to Rich McCarville, the Chief of Procurement Services with the county, who will go over the current status of this RFP. Mr. McCarville?
Thank you, Commissioner Bame. Good morning, Commissioners. So as you're aware, last week, the RFP for Public Outreach and Engagement Services closed. And upon my review, I had some concerns about whether we've received sufficient competition on the solicitation. Now, when that happens, a typical process for us is to do some outreach to try and get some feedback, you know, as to why. And some of the feedback I received was related to the timeline being a potential barrier for proposals to be developed and submitted. So that was where I came with the recommendation that it may, we may be well-served by reposting the RFP, allowing a little more time for respondents to develop their proposals. And obviously, that brings us to where we are with the recommendation today. So with that said, I'll turn it back to Commissioner Bame.
Thank you very much, Rich. Before taking any questions from commissioners, I want to give the Outreach Engagement Services RFP Ad-Hoc Committee an opportunity to update us on some recommended revisions to the RFP along the lines of supporting the goals that Rich just described. These are the revisions that we'll be considering and hopefully voting on today. With that, let me turn to co-Vice Chair Garcia, who I think is presenting for the ad hoc committee. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Bame, and thank you, Rich. And actually, thank you, Commissioners, for taking time out of your schedule to attend this special meeting. What I, let me just provide you a little bit of background. Sonia Diaz, Amy Katerina, and I are the members of this ad hoc committee, and we met a week ago today with staff after they had determined that there had been insufficient response to our RFP. And at the time, we, one of the things that we considered was bringing this decision, this news and this decision, back to the commission at our regularly scheduled meeting, which would have been on May 13th. We decided that we really could not afford to lose that much time, which is why we're having the meeting today. Had we done that, we probably would not have been able to make a decision on a contractor until probably, you know, the week of July 12th. And we would have really been delaying the work that we need to do. So again, thank you for being here today. We really felt like it was important to do that. So in the revisions that we've decided to recommend is to extend the offer's response time, as you can see on this slide, to three and a half weeks. That was the feedback that Rich got when he, when the DPC reached out to potential offers, offers who had indicated that they were interested in our RFP, and then did not actually submit a proposal. And in our, if you look down below at the next steps, you can see that in the first iteration, we posted the RFP on the 12th of April, and we actually posted it a day early, and they had two weeks to turn, to turn around a proposal. And our RFP is pretty rigorous, I will say, because we're really looking to get a very high-quality contractor and some really high-quality subcontractors. And the RFP requires that, that the contractor work with three subcontractors, because one of our highest priorities is to really reach into all of the different corners of the county and to reach out to all of the different communities and to make it possible for as many people in the county to participate in our redistricting process. So it was clear to us that we need to extend the turnaround time for offers, and we actually were initially looking at three weeks, but because of the way the dates fall, if we approve these revisions today, the RFP will be posted tomorrow. You can see that down below in next steps, May 6th. And then, three weeks later would have been the Thursday before Memorial Day, and we actually decided to give that Memorial Day weekend to the offerers, give that weekend, that additional time to the offerers, and we've given them a due date of June 1st, rather than, I think it would have been the 28th of, or the 27th of May, because it, the, our source selection committee probably would not begin evaluating right away on a holiday weekend. So three and a half weeks to work on the proposals and meet the deadline. And then, of course, we, as you can see there, we had many conversations about increasing the budget. You may recall that our original budget and the original RFP was $150,000. We determined that it, this was an opportunity to increase that budget, and just to provide you some context, we have in our overall budget for contractors, for the two, the demography and the outreach contractors, a total of $495,000 in that budget. And the demography budget is $200,000, and ours, our original RFP was for 150. I will say that it's been very difficult for both the ad hoc committee and for staff to get the information to try and figure out what, what exactly the right, you know, the right amount is for this kind of budget. There is no, we've looked at the other independent redistricting commissions, and everybody is doing their outreach differently. Some are doing their outreach all internally, some are doing some of their outreach with their demography consultants. It's, we cannot make any straight comparisons. So, but we do, our staff do have a lot of experience with these kinds of contracts, not exactly our kind of contract, but definitely outreach and doing outreach in the county. And the other consideration, so it's been difficult to try and figure this out, but we, we do believe that increasing the budget to $200,000 would provide an opportunity for potential offers to come back and take a look at our RFP and to add some of the innovative features that we were, that we're looking for, and also to bring in some really high-quality subcontractors. And we're requiring them to work with a minimum of three subcontractors. And the other factor that we were looking at and that came up was the fact, was that there is actually a lot of outreach going on right now. There are a lot of contracts out there, both already, you know, have already been granted and new ones, a lot of them around COVID, because with, you know, with the, with that, with the pandemic, there is a lot of need for information to be getting out into the community. So we do believe that the landscape for these kind of contracts are pretty competitive. So I want the commission to know that we gave a lot of thought to, to making this proposal, and certainly we're willing to discuss it further. But I, so you can see the next steps, we're asking for approval of this revised RFP. The timeline has us with the submissions, the proposals being due by June 1st. And then, the SSC, the Source Selection Committee, would come back to the IRC potentially in another special meeting for us to approve a contractor, an outreach contractor. There is some hope that we, that the SSC would be able to bring us a recommendation at our regularly scheduled meeting at the end of June, I think it's June 24th, but correct me, I, it's whatever, our second meeting in June. But if not, then the following week, just a few days later, we would come back and approve that consultant. And I, one other thing I want to emphasize is that we have seven public hearings that we need to hold before we start drawing maps, and we need this outreach consultant to help us with that. So we, time is of the essence, we're, you know, we regret that the first round of the RFP didn't, didn't yield the results that we were hoping, and it's now pushed us, pushed our timeline back by about a month, but we're trying to make sure that, that, you know, that we don't slip any more than that. So with that, Amy and Sonia, I think Sonia's here, I believe she was going to try and make it today. Amy, Sonia, and I are happy to answer any questions that you have. Chair Bame?
Thank you very much, Co-Vice Chair Garcia and Co-Vice Chair Katerina and Commissioner Diaz. I know it's been a lot of work. I also want to express again, thanks to staff and thanks to those commissioners who've been thinking about this a lot and working about it a lot. We'll turn for public comment in just a moment, but before that, I'd like to see if there are any requests from commissioners as clarifying questions. I see Commissioner Chen. Please go ahead, and then Commissioner Pons.
So clarify for me, please, as our current RFP, are bidders prohibited from bidding more than $150,000? You mentioned the budget as, as an issue.
Rich, you want to, why don't you take that?
Yeah, so in the RFP itself, the answer to that would be no, right? The evaluation criteria discloses what the anticipated budget is, and we ask offerers to speak to that. So it's, it's not necessarily if you're a cent over it, you will not be considered. It's a part of the evaluation factors.
Okay, so based on that, I guess, I think it might be, my thought is a bit premature to raise the budget until we get the responses in and see what prices they come in at, based on what they need to do to meet the, meet the criteria. Just, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll ask for additional comments on that when we get to discussion of a motion. For now, though, let me turn to Commissioner Pons and then Commissioner Larson.
Yes, thanks again for all the great work today at hot committee. My first question is, you said there were insufficient response to the RFP, insufficient in number of the quantity of the responses.
So I don't want to get into the specifics, obviously, because we're in, you know, we are in RFP and evaluation process. I mean, I can speak to more broadly to kind of what that determination may be made up of, and it can be a number of factors, right? It's kind of a fact-based analysis. But you know, it could include, for example, interested parties not responding, and that would prompt, you know, typically for me to do some outreach to find out why. Obviously, it was approximately a two-week turnaround, which is fairly expeditious, can relate to the number of proposals received, the completeness of proposals. So there's a wide variety of factors, but that is an analysis that we typically do, you know, at the point where the RFP closes, you know, because obviously, our goal ultimately is for, you know, robust competition and, you know, ultimately, a high-quality contract and contractor.
Okay, I understand that, not the analysis, just give me the numbers. Did we have more than three responses?
That's not something I can really disclose at this point.
Because I mean, part of the decision-making process here, so you know, the first comment was there was insufficient response to the RFP. So it is very difficult for me to understand what that means without quantifying that insufficient number. And if it's quality, is it because of how the proposal was written or because of the amount of time to respond to the proposal? So that's the first question. And then, the second question to the ad hoc committee is the rest of the process. So if we select a company or corporation to support us, then the rest of the process begins. Then there's the selection, and then there's the execution. And part of the execution would be a series of briefings and orientations between the commission and that company or that corporation that's been selected. So, I mean, we extended the time, and it could impact, you know, part of the public hearings. I say that because yesterday I had a chance to sit in on the East County forum, and it was extremely lively, and they filled every minute of time, and it was just back and forth, very interesting. And so I know these types of forums are going to be extremely important, because it really validates the transparency and the trust and the confidence in the process and the commission itself. So I'm going back to what was insufficient, because it really helps me to understand why I'm here and what I'm supposed to agree on.
Let me ask Rich to respond first, and then Rosette and other members of the ad hoc commission to respond to Commissioner Pons's comments. So first, Mr. McCarville.
Yeah, I mean, as I mentioned, I'm very reluctant to talk about those specifics. I understand what you're saying, but I'm, you know, obviously, I want to ensure that the, the process is followed and the integrity of the process remains, so I'm not sure that I can provide that information at this point.
Okay, so if the question I'm asking you, is it illegal or unethical? Because is that the reason why you can't answer? Because you say you're hesitant, and so there must be a legal issue or an ethical issue as to why you can't respond.
Well, the RFP process and the evaluation process is a confidential process, right? And my understanding is that process is being managed by the source selection committee as, you know, previously voted on by the IRC. So it's not a legal issue, an ethical issue. I think it's an integrity issue. It's, it's an issue of following our standard procedure in terms of maintaining the integrity of the process until information can be made public.
If I could just say, I might, maybe this will clarify a little bit. Rich, would you actually, I'm looking at my notes, and I may have misspoken, and if I did, I apologize, but in your briefing to us, you said that you did not receive responses that represented sufficient competition. So I don't know if that is any different than saying we didn't, that we got insufficient responses. I'm not sure it was necessarily insufficient responses, but the responses that we received didn't represent sufficient competition. Is that, that's what I wrote?
Yeah. In my view, based on kind of a number of factors and, you know, kind of, as I mentioned broadly, factors such as, I mean, receiving multiple responses would, would be, you know, one element that we may consider, as I say, you know, if we receive less responses than we anticipate, based on the interested parties, we would conduct some outreach and get some feedback, and that feedback came in, that the timeline was very tight. I mean, at the end of the day, I expect or predict to receive potentially more responses with a longer timeline. So that's kind of what, you know, how I came to that suggestion of insufficient competition. And as I say, this is, you know, a typical process we stand, we, we apply in such circumstances, but it's, it's based on a number of factors, not necessarily just a defined definition of insufficient competition.
Thank you.
Good. All right, so now, my list at the moment is Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Katerina, or Co-Vice Chair Katerina, Commissioner Brown. And I would just remind commissioners, we are still in the phase of asking clarifying questions. There will be sufficient time to discuss a motion later, if we're so inclined. With that in mind, Commissioner Larson.
Yes, thank you. I would like to just dig a little deeper and follow up on what Commissioner Pons then has been asking. Rich, did we receive any valid proposals? And secondly, did anyone ever state that they couldn't propose because of the budget that was implied in the RFP? Two questions.
Okay, the first question, again, I'm reluctant to get into those specifics. The, the second question, I, I did not receive direct feedback related to the budget. You know, that's, that's something that I'm comfortable saying. But the, yeah, the, the first question, I think, will provide, you know, more specifics. And, you know, obviously, again, I want to reemphasize, you know, the reason I'm reluctant to say is because I just want to, you know, maintain the integrity of the RFP process. We are still in RFP process, whether we repost or we continue. So I'm just really trying to protect, protect that, you know, part of the process.
Okay, so you feel you can't answer for one reason or another, whether there were any received at all?
Yeah, I think that's specific information related to the RFP itself.
Okay.
We'll keep going. Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
I just wanted to address and kind of clarify one of the questions that came up earlier from Commissioner Chen. He asked if it was premature to raise the budget. And what I wanted to clarify is, is that if we, we execute, we repost this proposal, and we still don't get enough responses, we have to start over again. We can't change the budget midstream. So, and Rich, if you could clarify that, I'd appreciate it, but if, if that's not the case, but that's my understanding, we would have to start over.
Um, so if I kind of heard you correctly, if we leave the budget as is, can it be changed in the future, I think was the question? I, I think we have some scope to do that. The way the RFP was set up was, there was a defined scope of work that we were asking for a proposal for based on a budget, but then there was also some additional pricing that we asked for that may include additional meetings, additional hours of work. So I think you could utilize some of that functionality to add extra work to the contract post-award.
Rich, if I can add, just as I think, I understand Commissioner Katerina's questions, but I think the, the issue is not how the RFP is set right now in terms of the budget, but rather, if there was, if we needed to increase it, it would, it would need to come back to the IRC, to the full IRC. So I think that's, that's, that might be more of the, challenge is not the right word, but process. So I think that's, that's the opportunity here, is if we want to increase the budget, if the IRC wants to increase it. I don't know if a range might be something that, that could also be considered, but while it's not an issue in the RFP itself, and there's that flexibility, the intent here, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Katerina, is that, that the full IRC be fully aware and approve of such range or increase.
Thank you, Maria. That's, that's what I was leaning.
Thank you all for that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I have you after Commissioner Brown, but was it on this topic? Okay, great. So Commissioner Brown, please.
Mine is similar to that contract. I was wondering about any of those contractors who have already submitted a proposal. If we up that budget, can they resubmit and for, for a larger price, or maybe add some extra things that they might do? Does that give them that opportunity to resubmit now, or do they have to resubmit in this next period of time, when everybody else is going to be added to it? You know, additional contractors?
Sorry, yeah, that, that's, that's correct. So we would, we would cancel this RFP, we would reissue a new RFP with a new number. So we'll start a new proposal, so speaking to the new criteria if applicable.
Okay.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Um, yes, I just wanted to reiterate again, maybe commissioners have a sense for how difficult this is. We, we did not receive any further, any more information than you are receiving in this meeting, because staff and the DPC are trying to protect the integrity of the RFP in that process. We're in a, in a difficult spot. I guess my question is, if, to the staff, to Rich, where, what, what would happen if we didn't get approval today to amend the RFP? Or if we just said, what, what would happen? I'm curious.
Um, I assume we would proceed with the original RFP itself.
Okay. Does just the extension of time also cause us to restart the RFP? Or?
Yeah, I think.
Increasing the budget?
I think the recommendation was to kind of re-release the RFP, if you will, and I think that's the cleanest way, right? If we reopen the RFP, got questions around resubmitting the proposals, existing proposals, so on, so forth. So the, the cleanest way is always to, you know, post a new one, reset the clock, if you will.
Okay, um, we now have a number of other questions, so let me, in order, I can see Commissioners Inman, Diaz, Krugliak, and then Garcia and Brown. So Commissioner, oh, okay, sorry, Commissioner Inman.
Yes, thank you. I guess I just wanted to address the, the comment just made by Commissioner Garcia, response by Mr. McCarville. I believe if we reject this today, it doesn't necessarily default to what was previously posted. I would assume that we could also send it back into the ad hoc for revision as well. So I don't, I don't think it just simply defaults or per se, you know, my understanding would be, you know, we would have other motions that could be made to take action of a different nature. Of course, that delays the whole process, so that, that's the only comment I wanted to make. I don't think it just necessarily defaults to the, the prior proposal. Thank you.
Rich or ad hoc members, did you want to respond to that? Okay, very good.
I'm going to respond to the resubmission of RFPs, because I just want a little more clarity on that, because we are not making substantive changes to the RFP's scope of work, and we're only extending the timeline for submission. And the budget is the only thing that's going to change if we do approve that piece. the budget is the only thing that's going to change if we do approve that piece. The issue is, for the people that have already submitted proposals, why would they resubmit again? So I just wanted to get that clarity, and I do apologize because I wasn't on that. Um, the first time you you were able to give us feedback on that. So I really would appreciate if you just reclarify that because it is, it is an onerous process to resubmit all over again. So I just want to honor whatever were the existing submissions.
Yeah, I I think with the language that was in the recommendation, my interpretation was it was a uh, you know, a reposting of the RFP, which, as I say, to me is kind of a clean slate, if you will, and new number and new opportunity to submit. Um, that's, that's my interpretation of the the language and what I was intending to do if it was uh approved.
Okay, it's just that in my experience of submitting RFPs, typically the agency will just extend the the due date and and doesn't mean that I have to resubmit my proposal all over again. So that's been my experience.
So if if we extended the due date before the RFP closed, that would be very typical of what we would do. Um, as I say, just for kind of clean list, I mean, again, hypothetically, if you, if it's closed and you reopen it, you have to address the ambiguity of anyone that may have already submitted, right? Do you want to update your proposal? Do you want to revise it? So generally speaking, in my opinion, the cleanest way is to create the new one, reach out to, you know, any potential offers that were interested or may have responded and um, you know, inform them that it's been reposted. And and to be honest, it, you know, it wouldn't be start again for them, right? If someone had proposed, it would be updating rather than uh, you know, rewrite.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Um, yes, I have to jump off in a minute. I had one quick question, which is how confident are we that by extending the timeline, since that was, it seemed like the biggest issue in the feedback? How confident are we that we are going to get um additional and or higher quality responses? Are are we quite confident that this will work? Or is there an equally good likelihood that we're just going to end up in the same place and have to move forward, but a month delayed?
Uh, I am confident we would. Obviously, this is an art, not a science, and there's so many variables and I, you know, I can't fully predict the future, but I I would be confident uh that we would receive more robust competition if we allowed a little more time.
Commissioner Pons, uh, with the caveat that I really would like us to get to public comment and move to a motion as soon as possible.
Yeah, I understand that. I appreciate it, Chair Bane. I'm I'm concerned because I put myself in a position of a contractor that bid it on the RFP. And then I am thinking, I think I followed all the rules and I'm competitive. And then all of a sudden, it's reposted with an extension. And if I'm not selected, then I'm gonna go, you know, why not? Did you extend it to bring in other competitors? And then all of a sudden, I was crowded out of this, the competition process, when I met all the parameters for being a competitor and getting the contract? So I guess my question is, are we introducing and inviting some sort of legal issue because of the extension? I mean, it sounds simple, but we are familiar with the RP process. And this may be introducing something that we don't want to introduce just because of an extension of a timeline because, but I can't really get to that because I can't understand what the word insufficient means. And I can't get clarity because it's a, I guess it's a conflict of the the process. And confidentially, I think all the commissioners should be um have access to what that information is that's so confidential that we can't share. And if it's so confidential and it can't be shared with the public, then why don't we, maybe it deserves a closed executive session? Because this is an important matter. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I I I mean, and I will, I will just say, um, I I mean, I I won't comment on, you know, the, some of the legal issues and so so on, so forth, but I I can tell you that we're following an established process um in what we're doing here. Um, so this is, as I say, a typical DPC process in such of a situation. Um, so, you know, rest assured that we're confident in that fact.
And and just to to add a little bit um to what Rich has said there in terms of following the standard process, um, we're also looking at and um making sure that we follow what was approved by the IRC for this particular process, which was that after the RFP documents are posted, um, the process defaults to the standard county process, including the confidentiality of the SSC and everything that goes with it. And so um that that is also a part of keeping all of that information confidential.
Okay. With that, unless there are any other clarifying questions, but great dialogue, much appreciated. Thank you all. Let me ask then, David, if there are any requests from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you, Chair Bane. We did not have any members of the public who have requested to address the commission in advance on this item. If anyone would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any request to speak. This concludes public testimony on this item, Chair Bane.
Thank you much, David. All right. We've got a couple of different things we need to do next. One is, and what I'd like to do first is to have a motion on the floor on how to proceed with next steps. The wording I received in advance for the motion was to approve the recommended revisions to the Outreach Engagement Services RFP, recommended by the Ad hoc Committee, to extend the offer's response time and increase the budget from one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. I want to ask staff first, both Barbara and Rich, as well as counsel. Is the appropriate wording here to approve recommended revisions? Or to approve the recommended revisions through reposting? What do we need in the motion to make sure we're getting the, we're discussing the right decision?
So I'll, I'll start off. The the language um as it indicates, the revision piece of it should be accurate um or is accurate a- as it states, the motion's embedded in it, and that's the motion.
Rich, that's correct from your perspective, too?
Yeah, I believe so.
Hillary?
Can I ask staff if they can bring up that slide, please? That might be helpful. I know.
Thank you.
Team?
So that key phrase that is in the first few words, to approve the recommended revisions. And Hillary, I just want to make sure from your perspective, that does what needs to be done based on the briefings you just heard.
Yeah, tha- that's right. The uh IRC would be approving a new RFP document with those recommended revisions.
Okay, so in this language, we'll cover that in an acceptable way from a legal requirement perspective.
Uh, yes, that's our, that's our view.
Very good. So let's leave that slide up, if you don't mind. I will ask for a motion to approve the recommended revisions as described in this slide in view. Do I have a motion for that?
I still move. Back then.
And I've got split screen. Who moved it?
Uh, Elie Dardos.
Good, thank you. And second?
Katerina.
Good. Thank you very much. All right, now move to discussion. Um, I I think some of the points are already self-evident. I'll ask uh unless we need that slide up anymore to take that down so that I can see everyone in gallery view, okay? Uh, I see Commissioner Chen. Anyone else want to intervene at this point? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hanson. Brown, Co-Vice Chair Katerina. Okay, Commissioner Chen.
I'm so happy I can press my raise hand button faster than everybody else, apparently. Um, I I would like to request that we make that two separate motions, one for the extension and one for the budget. I think they're two separate issues.
Very good. Um, let me ask Commissioner Dostal and Commissioner Katerina, is that acceptable? We'll split the motion.
Um, I'd like to do whatever gets us to a vote as soon as possible. So I think they're fine together, but you know, I think it's fair to vote on them together if we haven't, you know, enough, but.
Any response to that? Please just intervene.
So so my, you know, my take on this um is that these two items are together. Um, and and I believe that we will not have an improvement if we don't also increase the budget. And so that therefore their length, that's so I would like to
Right now, for right now, Commissioner Chen will come back to it if we need to, but we'll see how the discussion goes and we'll keep that suggestion in mind.
Can I, can I ask one more clarif- then? I didn't hear why we need to increase the budget. Um, and I know a budget is not, it's not a cap. I mean, anybody bids whatever they need to bid, so. Um, and I think Rich said that he didn't get any feedback saying the budget was insufficient. So I just haven't heard anything that says there's a reason why we need to increase the budget, and it would help help me in my understanding if if we had some justification behind it.
Can can I address that, Chairman Bane? Okay, so the reason I wanted to address it is I did most of the work on uh since since we heard the news last week, we've we've as a group been spending a lot of time on trying to decide uh how best to move this forward in in the in the most uh successful way. And and I and I can, so I'm going to say two things. First, as a communications professional with thirty years of experience, um, my experience in the in the corporate world is it's very expensive and our our budget was way too low, but but I, at the time and now, still, I recognize that this is a government entity, and so the pricing structures are going to be different. So um when when we agreed to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, um, I did at the time think it was too low, but I, we thought it was sufficient. Um, one of the things that came out during our conversation, so now to get to the second part of how we decided to raise it, one of the things that came out during the conversation was that there was more competition from these COVID-related um grants that were out there and other proposals that other entities are doing. And so in my mind, uh, I felt that we needed to increase the budget to make us more competitive, not compared to a like-sized project or the same project, but compared to all the other business that is going on for these communications professionals in the field. And and the added bonus in my mind was that uh if there is additional money available in a budget, that uh perhaps there could be higher quality or or continued uh high quality or a higher number of subcontractors. And and that was very important to us when we were setting up the proposal. We wanted to make sure that local community uh based uh contractors could could be part of the process. You know, we do need a large firm, a large-ish firm to to deliver this uh this uh RFP. But we also want to make sure that we involve members of the community who are purported to be a smaller firm that couldn't couldn't qualify uh in terms of capacity to run this program, but could be a part of the program. So to me, um, the increase, it was two factors, the increased competition in the industry for other types of projects would warrant uh an increase in budget. And the fact that if if we do have additional monies, we might encourage more uh contractor, use of local contractors, subcontractors, rather. Uh, and I hope that, uh, and I'm happy to to answer any questions about what process we use to justify the two hundred thousand dollars. I'll be honest, I thought we should move it to two fifty, but I'm, I had to be talked down. Um, and again, I think because my experience in the corporate world is very different than what happens in the in the public sector. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about what we looked at, how we justified it. Um, you know, as as uh Rosette, Commissioner Garcia mentioned, we put a lot of thought into this and and we trust that the county DPC staff and our staff have given us appropriate information and are are following their own procedures, which is why we decided to work to to use their process and not interject ourselves into the actual SSC process. Um, and that 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 is what we decided. So we have to trust Rich when he says he had insufficient competition to know that 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 is what what we have to, you know, and that that is the process we have to follow.
Thank you, Commissioner Katerina. A- am I understanding our our process correctly in that the budget, I mean, it will cost what it will cost? The budget is a guideline. Um, again, people can bid whatever they believe they need to bid to meet our requirements. They're not limited by the budget number we placed in the RFP. Um, am I incorrect in in that understanding and that and that we're not limited in what we end up paying for this? I mean, we will pay what we need to pay based on the RFP process. Am I incorrect in that understanding?
No, you're not. I'm gonna let Rich answer that. Um, there, you know, but I will say um, the the budget is is supposed to cover the scope of work that we have in the RFP.
And maybe, Rich, you can also speak to the fact that um pricing is part, is one of the um evaluation criteria.
Yeah, cor- correct. So I I mean, what you're talking about, there's minimum requirements in the RFP, which are very clearly articulated and called out. They are minimum requirements, right? Um, and then there's scored evaluation criteria. And the way it's presented in this RFP, it's in descending order of importance by paragraph. So you'll see price is one component of that evaluation criteria. Um, and obviously, um, you know, price will be evaluated accordingly, you know, in comparison to our our budget. So to answer your question, it's, it's not a minimum requirement, it is a scored criteria.
Okay.
I have a quick question for you. Uh, Commissioner Brown?
Okay, um, go ahead.
And I, quick question. I think it's a quick question. What happens if we vote it down and we don't do anything with it? We don't extend it or we don't even add to the budget? Are we in a point where we can do anything with what we have? Or, and also, um, those contractors that didn't get their bid in on time? How do we know that they're going to be uh timely when they give us the product that we're looking for? I mean, was it, was it really too unreasonable to have them respond within a two-week period of time, just to get a bid into us, or is that an implication that maybe they won't be timely when they deliver to us?
I I don't know the answer to that question. That's one of the variables that I I don't control. Um, now, a- as I say, I my hope is that with more time, we would get more robust competition. Uh, outside of that, I I really can't fully predict.
Hmm. Okay, let me turn then to the list I have right now. It's Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Inman, then Commissioner Diaz. Okay, Commissioner Hanson, thank you for your patience.
I think it's really important for us to understand what's happening on the bidder's side here. When you are in a position to offer your services for something like outreach, the day the RFP comes out, you sit down with your leadership team and you go through the parameters. And if you see that you have two weeks to put together a coalition of at least three other partners and understanding the rigor of that, you have to get memorandum of understanding from all of the partners. You have to collect all the information about their their staff and what they can offer. You have to sit down as the lead agency and decide who's going to do what when. If I were the person that was deciding, I would have said, we can't do that in two weeks, especially under this current circumstances where we have to have Zoom meetings and we, you know, we we can't just be passing papers across the table. So I would say that there, most of the people who didn't bid probably never started to write anything because they made the decision at that very first meeting that this was not within their scope of of ability to get together. I mean, when when I was writing county proposals, we used to have ticket, have to take a truck down to the county with it, boxes and boxes of copies of long, huge documents. I mean, this is not a simple process, particularly for the nonprofit world where a lot of this outreach is going to happen. The other thing I wanted to mention is I also, like uh Commissioner Pons, set, was part of that uh meeting last night in East County. And it's very, one of the issues that came up in several different ways was a competition And it's very, one of the issues that came up in several different ways was a competition among thunder, among people like us for the work of people like demographers. And their demographers are having to pick and choose among people that are, are asking them to bid because they only have so much manpower. And this is a very crowded field for a very short period of time. And not everybody's going to get the help they need because everybody needs it at the same time. So that competition, I mean, I hate to see us put this out another month just because of that. Because in that month, a lot of organizations are going to get tied up with contracts with other agencies. So I, I think we're really in a, in a terrible spot here. And if we don't understand what the bidders are doing behind, there's a very, very tight network of people in San Diego who respond to RFPs, particularly ones in this, in the outreach, in the social services department. Those organizations are talking to each other all the time. What are you going to bid on? What are you gonna, who's going to partner with them? And who should we partner with? Do we want to partner with the Y or do we want to partner with United Way? Or who do we want to work with? I mean, that is a very tight-knit community. And those people, those grant writers know each other. They share notes. So this is all happening and we, and we need to understand that because it's going to affect how successful we are in all of these bids. So as a grant writer, that's my two cents.
Points very well taken. And I would just add the footnote that I think many of these organizations are doing things for a bigger purpose than simply winning a contract. And it tracks with our purpose as redistricters. So I, I think, I think Commissioner, you captured it very, very well. Commissioner Inman, then Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you. So I just want to make the comment that budget is an issue here. It's clearly a driving factor. The lack of competitive responses simply means that the budget wasn't high enough for people to say, two weeks, you know, I'll do this. If we were to set the budget at a million dollars, I know people would have found the time to get it done in two weeks, right? Time is money. So we do need to increase the budget here. It was clearly one of the things driving the lack of competitive response. The budget was inadequate. We need to raise it to be successful. So that's my comment.
Ken, Richard said that was specifically not the feedback you received.
Oh, when you go out and ask people why they're not responding, they're not going to tell you it's because of money. That's a competitive information. They're going to say, well, it wasn't worth my time. Saying it wasn't worth my time means it is a budget issue. You know, people don't, you know, dollars and cents. And when I, you know, when I worked with bidding and talking with, with contractors and such, I mean, they wouldn't say your budget wasn't insufficient. They would find another reason. But, you know, time is money. And so I, I think it's very clear, even though they didn't tell Rich, that it, it was a combination, if you will. But for sure, it was a budget issue.
In a very unique context, I'd agree. Commissioner, yes?
Yes, thank you all. All very good comments and good points brought up by Commissioners Inman and Hanson. I just, as a member of the ad hoc, I know this isn't an ideal structure that we're working within with DPC that we're not familiar with, but it is, we just have to honor that process as we had voted originally as part of the IRC. And I will, from the perspective of my other hat being in the nonprofit sector and also in, in, in a grant, a grant writer as well. Typically, my experience with RFPs has been various. But I looked at actually LA County, who just put out their RFP for the demographer, and they gave a whole month for response time. So I think extending that response time does give us a little wiggle room. And I certainly, the, the bidders do appreciate that. And of course, if you remember, we did have our industry day. And so we very thoughtful about getting that input. But again, you know, I, I would look at this instead of splitting the motions. I would look at as one, increasing the budget on one hand, and also the timeline to make our proposal more competitive in this already crowded space. I mean, we're competing with LA County here. We're competing with all these other similar counties. And, and, and just increasing our budget by 50,000 is not going to hurt us. I mean, we already heard that our total budget for these contractors is 495,000. So we do have some wiggle room there and I think we should take advantage of it. And now's the time because we don't want to repeat this whole process all over again, come back and have a special meeting to approve a revised RFP with an increased budget, right? So, so let's just get it all done at once in this meeting, put our best foot forward, see what we get, right? And, 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 you know, let DPC do its job in trying to be diligent and looking through all of the criteria that we set out and developed. And, and, you know, see what we get. So let's just put our best foot forward and that's my last comment. And hopefully we can get to a vote.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Very good points. I want to alert everyone that in about 30 seconds to a minute, I'm going to ask if any commissioners object to the current motion on the table so that we can target any further discussion. And I am going to limit discussion because I think the points have all been made. The one thing I wanted to take a, a few seconds for while you think about your position is to be very clear to the community and to the public, including those who may watch this afterwards. We're talking a lot about what our commission needs. I did want to just put down the marker that we're all very cognizant and it's come up in a lot of the other conversations that have been referred to as to what the community needs. We, I think all wish we could devote seven figures to outreach on this biz, on, on this issue in particular. Because the redistricting process, including the focus on hard-to-reach communities and empowering and hearing from communities of interest is critically important. I think in particular to those grant writers and organizations that Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Diaz were mentioning, this is a unique opportunity that only comes once every 10 years. It happens alongside a pandemic and its aftermath that comes back even, comes even more rarely than that. So we're left with where we are. But I do think there is some unique advantages and I want to continue to encourage every organization that has the slightest interest in pursuing this to make their best case for it, including on the subcontractor piece. It really is a unique opportunity to contribute to the community, to build the community and to do the kind of outreach that I think those organizations are committed to. That's what's in it for you beyond what's in it for us as a commission. So with that, let me just take a very quick, for lack of a better term, straw poll. Are any commissioners still feeling objections, concerns they want to have addressed that they don't think have been addressed? Because then we'll move quickly to a vote. But I just wanted to give that moment for commissioners. Commissioner Pons?
Yes, and I'm gonna just say this and I'm ready to vote. And this goes back to Commissioner Diaz's point. She said, let's do what we have to do to see what we get. It's very hard for me to do that because I don't know what we have, right? And that would really help me because I don't know what we have, so I don't know what I'm going to get. If I knew that what we had was sufficient, then this would be a moot point. I'm going to push back on Mr. McCarville. When we started this conversation two months ago, I said, how can we quantify the, the value of the competitors for this specific outreach and engagement contract? And his response was, we can't do that. But in his response today, he said, we can't really, we've got these variables that we prioritize in order to, as part of the selection process. Now, I'm going to trust the DPC because it's a process. But I gotta tell you, it's hard to say this is what I want because I don't know what I have, but I am ready to vote. But I just wanted to express that because I brought that comment up to Mr. McCarville day one of this discussion and I was told, there is no standard. There is no industry standard for how we measure these corporations and companies. And now there seems to be a standard by which we're going to select these contractors. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you for that. Very good. And points well taken, Commissioner Pons, I think, beyond today's issue and something I, I would encourage commissioners to think about ahead of our regular meeting next Thursday. But with that, unless there's objection, I'm going to turn to David to call for a vote. Very good. So David, could you please call them up?
Thank you, Chair Bane. Commissioner Kugliak may have had to leave. Commissioner Inman?
Yes.
Chair Bane?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Caterina?
Aye.
Chair Bane, that motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you much, very much, David. Thank you, commissioners, for the substantive discussion, for the respect. And I'll thank Commissioner Dostal in particular for weighing in early on whatever gets us to a conclusion. A point I'd like commissioners to keep in mind for our May 13th meeting, both in the proceedings there and in future discussion of how we do our work in the future. But all very good points and truly valued. Thank you. It is serious and I hope it gets us the result we want. So on behalf of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission, I want to thank the members of the public who joined us today and will watch this in the future for lending their voice in particular to the important work we are completing. I look forward to continuing to move the procurement process forward with all our commissioners and staff and expand efforts to engage the public in the redistricting process. And I think we have reconfirmed our commitment to that. Seeing no other comments, we'll be moving on to adjournment. This concludes the business before the commission today. The next regular meeting of the Independent Redistricting Commission will be next Thursday, May 13th, 2021, at 2:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned at 12:32 PM. Thank you all.